A, we have approval of October 24, 2017, regular commission minutes.
Madam Chairperson, there's been a few corrections that have been already taken care of, approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second it.
Great, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 2017. All in favor say pro.
Pro.
Pro. Motion passes. Mayor Mance, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Deliberate an act on the Main Street Festival of Lights.
Madam Chair and Commission, we do have present at the meeting tonight President of Raton Main Street, Diana Sanchez, and we staff have reviewed the request for the Festival of Lights and various departments have approved that. It's an event that we're familiar with, it's become a successful event over the last several years, and I would like to call on Ms. Sanchez to kind of describe the event to you Commissioners.
Good evening. Basically, it's our annual Festival of Lights, which is a stationary parade, and so we plan to have that again on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, which is when we always kick off our holiday season, tree lighting, all that sort of thing. And so, we are encouraging people to enter their floats, and it's been a successful event. We try to do it also to help the businesses in the area. They always stay open that evening and get a lot of traffic in and out of there, and so it's going to be the same as we've done in years past.
Nice. How many years has this been?
I want to say it's been six or seven that we've been doing it, and it's growing.
Yeah.
It's growing every year, so.
It's very nice.
Last year, I think we had two full blocks.
Right.
Of floats, so, yeah, we've, we're hoping that'll happen again. Gives people a chance to stand and take pictures and just really check out what's been done there, so.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Any questions for Ms. Sanchez?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Raton Main Street Festival of Lights.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any other further discussion? So, all in favor of approving the Raton Main Street Festival of Lights, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Deliberate an act on the grant between number 32920121, between City of Raton and New Mexico Department of Transportation, project number 18-st-rf-078, Police Department Traffic Safety Grant.
Madam Chair and Commission, in your packet you have a proposed grant agreement. It's from NMDOT, the City of Raton, and the amount of $8,159. This award will fund the End Driving Well Impaired Campaign, the Buckle Up Click It or Ticket Campaign, and Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, 100 Days and Nights of Summer. The city is, upon your approval of this, would agree to provide the professional services stated in the agreement, consisting of services provided by Raton Police Department. We do have Chief Garcia, Chief, if you can come forward, and we had gone through the basics of the grant agreement, and I'll let you do the cleanup.
All right, Madam Commission, Mr. City Manager, as Mr. Berry stated, it covers all of those programs. We are mandated by NTSB and SAFER to hold those events on a calendar throughout the year. So, my captain maintains stats and returns them to the state. Stats dictate funding, but funding has been cut on us in the last two years. There used to be a really good grant, but it's dwindling down, so we go through it rather quickly, just because of the senior officers will take over on that grant, and so the pay dictates that it eats up quite quickly. But it is a good program. Obviously, it's for NDWI, Buckle Up, 100 Days and Nights is for everything, so it helps out with traffic enforcement in the town. Any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right. Good deal. I have no questions.
Okay. Any questions, Madam Mayor?
No.
All right. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement in number 032920121, between City of Raton and New Mexico Department of Transportation, project number 18-st-rf-078, Police Department Traffic Safety Grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement between Department of Transportation and Police Department Traffic Safety Grant. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Deliberate an act on renewal of MOU between City of Raton and the Schuler Restoration Board.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, back in 2015, the City of Raton had requested proposals for management services of the Schuler Theater, and we got one response, that was from the Schuler Restoration Corporation Incorporated. The Schuler Restoration Committee has performed those services for many years, and really have done an excellent job at doing that. We have very dedicated people on that committee that have provided their time and their expertise to the restoration, the maintenance of the Schuler Theater, and the operation of that, and brought many diverse type of events to the Schuler Theater. We do have an amendment to the memorandum of understanding that will extend our agreement for those services through June 30 of 2018, and that date comes from the original memorandum of understanding, under the same terms that we have operated under. I would state to the Commission that we have completed the Schuler Cinema Project, and I know all of you were present at the world premiere of the Thor movie, and it looked great to me and it sounded great to me, and I think it's a very successful project, and I would just encourage the citizens of Raton to experience watching a movie in the Schuler Theater. Now, I would state that partners with Schuler Restoration Corporation are the people that manage and operate the El Raton Theater and own the Raton, El Raton Theater, and so it's a collaborative effort, and it's off to a good start, and I think it's mutually beneficial to all of those groups involved. Now, Mr. Donati is present, he's the president of Schuler Restoration, and Billy, we would hate to see you come all the way down and not come up and speak, so if you would add any wisdom to that presentation.
The three Bs of public speaking: be sincere, be enthusiastic, and be seated. Thank you so much for the privilege and honor of being able to look after one of our best not-kept secrets. I think worldwide, the Schuler Theater is well-known, and it's in good hands. We love it, everybody loves the Schuler, one of the few things that in any community everybody loves, and that is our Schuler Theater. So, things are going well, El Raton is running it, the new digital cinema, as Mr. Berry said, it's being run very well. They've been having crowds that are building, and I might add to also that on Thursday night, the Colfax County Rapid Response District Number Eight is going to have a Toys for Tots fundraiser, and so they're going to show the movie Only the Brave, and that's about the Granite Mountain firefighting unit, and so people can come. If you bring a toy, you get a free medium popcorn, such a deal, and a dollar off on admission, and they'll pass the boot around, and again, it's for a good cause, and yet another asset and another aspect of the Schuler Theater, so.
What's that date again?
That's Thursday, the 16th.
This coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the thing you've done there. Appreciate you.
I've heard some pretty positive comments about seeing movies there and how enjoyable it is. No one seems to mind walking down the street, two buildings over to get their popcorn, so.
No, not for the world's best popcorn.
Yeah.
It's a completely different thing than the early '50s, when we used to go to this theater there to see the movies.
Yeah.
So, but it's, it's nice, it really is.
It's got a great sound.
They did a good job.
Yeah.
Well, thanks to the city also, too, and all of the contractors. When we had that grand opening and the world premiere, we had a lot of people there that did so much to make it all happen. It's not just one entity.
And Madam Chair and Commission, I would just state that, you know, on a project like that, there are obviously a lot of steps, a lot of hoops to jump through. The project was brought to the attention of the city by Mr. Donati, who had done a lot of work previously to bringing this up, with the New Mexico Economic Development Department to get that funding set up, and so, again, the Schuler Restoration Committee as a whole is just a great partner to City of Raton, we really depend on them for operations at Schuler Theater, and there have been a lot of events over the time that we've had this MOA, and they're working continuously and working hard to bring those events to Raton, use the Schuler Theater, and keep Schuler Theater in top shape. So, I appreciate their efforts, I appreciate the efforts of the El Raton, and we had a great contractor on the job, Tim Bird, local contractor, did all of the steps, all the construction, worked with Sonic, the provider of the equipment, and, you know, no one really has better knowledge or better respect for the Schuler Theater than Tim Bird. Also, Dave Little from Alpha Design provided professional services on the project, and so all done with, with the local folks.
Very good.
Keep up the good work, Jerry.
Yep. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the renewal of the MOU between City of Raton and the Schuler Restoration Board.
Point of order. Shouldn't that be MOA instead of MOU?
It is MOA, yes.
All right, thank you for that correction. Do you want to amend your motion, please?
I amend my motion to include or change the MOU to MOA.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to correct, make the correction of MOA from MOU, and approve the MOA between City of Raton and Schuler Restoration Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed indicate same? Motion passes. And Trish, did you have a parliamentary comment on it?
Did we skip the public hearing?
Oh.
Sixty.
I'm sorry about that. So, we also have item D, public hearing on ordinance adopting a supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax, providing for an election, repealing ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring, and declaring and emergency. Is there any, any discussion, anyone who has comment on this issue at this time?
Madam Chair, I would just preface the public hearing by calling on Mr. Campbell from Raton Water Works, I think he could provide some additional information. We have talked about the, the ordinance at two previous meetings, but it, you know, for the benefit of the public, somebody who is listening, or someone that plans to make comments either tonight or prior to the commission action on this, Mr. Campbell will provide this information. I would just state to those interested in the public, we will have an additional public hearing. We will accept input from the public in writing, they can come down and make their feelings known, or they can come to the commission meeting and address the commission, so whatever kind of public comment works, we will accept that.
Very good.
Madam Chair.
Commissioners, city manager, clerk, we're about to skip the one that's near and dear to my heart, after all 26 years, but this, this actually is just an, ordinance is actually to turn around and be action to put this on the ballot. This will still be a ballot issue in March, that has to be voted on by the public. The one thing to always remember, that this will reduce the tax from a 1% grocery receipts tax to a 3/4 of a percent grocery receipts tax, which has been what has really helped the City of Raton stay in compliance regulatory-wise, but also have a good ample water supply, which is what initially did in construction of the Cimarron Pipeline. At the same time, it helps the traveling public, assists with the utility bills, of which they consumed a large part of it, with the amount of hotel rooms and things we have in place, and keeps us with a really competitive water rate, but gives us the time to update some aging infrastructure, just like the rest of the towns in the United States. Raton is the same situation, you're looking at some pipelines that are really showing their age, this has got a long list of projects of what we've accomplished, and so this will give the public an opportunity to vote on that as we move forward with it and make that decision with that, to try to keep our competitive rates, but at the same time, get a tax reduction. At that point, I'd answer any questions.
And you have a plan to put out some printed educational information to the public?
Yes, we've actually, I've got a little bit of help we're putting together, we're already working on putting some together of what the tax has accomplished in the past. We would actually turn around and probably anticipate in January a mailer that would go out to all the utility customers, but at the same time, we would go to all the civic groups and everything else, the radio station, and do some announcements of what it has accomplished, make sure everybody's aware of what it does do, but at the same time, then it gives them all the information to make their decision when they go to the polls in March.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dan.
Madam Chair, we have a few people in the audience, I don't know if anyone present would like to address the commission or make their comments.
Seeing all negative signs, so.
Positive signs.
Well, posi, positive signs to Dan's comments and negative signs to other speakers. But, you know, public opinion is appreciated, and that education that it's actually going to be a quarter percent correct decrease is, I think, very important to get out there. All right, thank you very much. Since we hit item E, we'll move on to F. Deliberate an act on resolution 2017-52, adopt mileage rate amendment.
Madam Chair, I would call on the city treasurer for the next two items, resolution 2017-52 and under G, 2017-53.
Madam Chair and Commission, this mileage rate amendment is one that we do annually, and so we review the previous IR, yes, the IRS rate change in the previous January, which
is now 53.5 cents per mile, so that would require us to lower our rate to be in compliance, not only with that, but also the state did pass a House bill, and it does allow us to do a mileage reimbursement rate up to an amount not to exceed the IRS standard mileage rates at the previous January. So, we would be requesting a mileage rate change of 53.5 cents per mile with this resolution, and it would supersede the resolution that we passed last year.
And what was it last year?
54 cents.
Oh, okay, so, yeah. That's bad for the budget, huh?
And this is something that the auditors check every year when they audit our mileage and per diem records, so they do make sure that we are paying a rate that does not exceed the approved IRS mileage. So, with that, I'd recommend approval unless there's any questions.
I have no question.
No questions.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-52, mileage, adopt mileage rate amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 217-52, adopt mileage rate amendment. Are any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the same sign? Thank you, motion passes. Deliberate an act on resolution 2017-53, budget adjustment number four, FY18.
Also in your packet this evening is a budget adjustment. We have a few just merely line item adjustments, and then we did get the state library grant award, which was $134 less than what we had budgeted, so we're just adjusting our revenue and expense to reflect the actual grant that was awarded for this year. And then we did receive a donation, a private donation for the Rex Center, so we're going to reflect that also in our revenue and expense, and then we made a loan payment on the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, and I'm just making adjustments to reflect the actual principal and interest and the admin fee that was applied to that loan. So, real basic adjustments this evening.
Very good.
Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Questions, I'm ready.
Madam Mayor, do you have any questions regarding the?
No, no, I don't.
Budget adjustment, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-53, budget adjustment number four, FY18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2017-53, budget adjustment number four, FY18. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Deliberate an act on resolution 2017-54, appointment of interim city clerk.
Madam Chair and Commission, I am sad to announce that our current city clerk, Tricia Mascherinas, has submitted her resignation. Tricia has worked for the City of Raton since 2011, she started as an administrative assistant and has worked her way up to certified municipal clerk, and that's quite an accomplishment in that time. Tricia has been a key member of our team here at the city and at the office, and we're really going to miss Tricia. She is leaving us to pursue another job opportunity, and Tricia, we're really going to miss you, as we've enjoyed working with you. Personally, I want to say thanks for, you know, all of Tricia's hard work and the help that she's provided to me over the years that I've been here, and just say thanks for all of her efforts, and we wish her the best in the future.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Unfortunately, this will be Tricia's last meeting with us, and she'll, she'll stay in the office up till the 22nd, so we're gonna wish her well, and we have made a provision for an appointment of an interim city clerk, so you have the resolution in hand. Fortunately for the City of Raton, we do have Michael Ann Antonucci, who has previously held the title of city clerk. This is important, and actually, the next item as well, because we are coming up on election season, which would be in March of 2018, so this action would appoint Mrs. Antonucci as the interim city clerk. We will make those provisions for the election, and we'll make a permanent condition for determination on city clerk down the road a little bit.
I'll go ahead.
I was just going to tell Tricia we're going to miss you a lot, but it's.
Thank you, and thank everybody here for the opportunity, I've learned a lot from each of you.
It's, it's hard, Dick and I, someone moving on with and progressing with their lives, so congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
And good luck in the future, and don't be a stranger.
Thanks. I appreciate all the support.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-54, appointment of interim city clerk.
Can we take these together possibly, or no?
I'll second that.
I would vote on them separately.
Separately.
I think, Madam Chair, yes.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2017-54, appointment of interim city clerk. Is there any further discussion? In that case, all in, shall we do a roll call vote on this?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
All, the motion is approved. Deliberate an act on resolution 2017-55, appointment of deputy clerks for the 2018 election.
Madam Chair and Commission, in resolution 2017-55, the action would be for the commission to approve the appointment of Desiree Trujillo and Robin Osborne to serve as deputy municipal clerks, and thereby giving them authority to perform election duties pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated 3-8-7 as needed. Ms. Trujillo and Ms. Osborne have attended training on election school, they're well-qualified. We're fortunate that we have, you know, a number of people in the office that have the training and are prepared. Unfortunately, you know, this, this opportunity came up for Tricia prior to the election, but the actions that were taken, we feel comfortable in handling those election duties.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2017-55, appointment of deputy clerk for the 2018 election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2017-55, appointment of deputy clerks for the 2018 election. Is there any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on this as well.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
All were in favor, so motion is approved. City managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, I attended an inter-agency forum regarding opioid and chemical abuse problems. That forum was held at the county building. There were a lot of people in attendance that represented public agencies, law enforcement, and other concerned citizens, some of our partners in areas of community development. A good turnout for this forum. I think, obviously, as a result of that initial meeting, the task would be to form a committee or a task force, which will then begin an evaluation of the problem, and it's a extensive problem, really, across the country, it's affecting a lot of communities. Certainly, we see that effect in Raton, so the City of Raton will participate with the task force, and we will seek solutions, a very challenging issue. I would report to the commission that construction is well underway on the construction of Raton Municipal Airport, renovation of Taxway A, and the new construction of Taxway D. Today, the contractor, Northern Mountain Construction, started asphalt paving, they're scheduled to complete asphalt paving on Saturday, and the job will be essentially complete, we'll, the contractor will place pavement markings following that, and we'll wrap up that project. So, we've been fortunate that the weather has been very favorable, it's been good, and we do look at wrapping that up. Project's gone very well. We have been conducting closeout activities of the Schuler Cinema Project, I've got a few things to do on that and report to New Mexico Economic Development, because we did have the lead of funds involved in that project, so we're currently wrapping that up. I did attend a design kickoff meeting along with. I did attend a design kickoff meeting along with, uh, Mr. Campbell for the filter plant improvement project that was held on November, uh, ninth, 2017, and, uh, that consists of about a two and a half million dollar, uh, project, that's estimated cost, which consists of improvements to phloaculation and sedimentation basin, uh, improvements to the solids removal system, replacement of chlorination systems, coagulation feed, bulk storage systems, uh, replacement of air scour blowers, metering systems, backwash system components, instrumentation of controls, and heating and ventilation systems. So we will, uh, complete the design process on that. We had a, a team of representing the engineers here, spent all day, uh, in the meeting with Dan to go over the objectives of the project and then walking through the filter plant. Uh, this is a pretty large project for Raton. Uh, Mr. Campbell has worked, uh, for many months to get the funding in place through a USDA loan grant, uh, program, and our portion of the, uh, grant, or the loan, again, would be repaid by funds that originate from the, uh, municipal grocery receipts tax that we had talked about, so, uh, another important reason, uh, to consider that. One last thing. Jared Chatterley, the Director of Raton Parks and Recreation, has prepared and submitted an application for a National Recreation Trail designation for the Climax Canyon Nature Trail. Uh, he's submitted that to the National Park Service, and we will await the results of that, uh, that designation and report back to the commission. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Sounds great. Are there any questions regarding the City manager's report?
No questions.
All right, good. Madam Mayor, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't.
Is there anything else to come before this commission tonight? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.